... meaning that you can see a difference between the 2017 budget and the 2018 budget in the special needs grant revenue. And that's directly a result of the WashDOT looking at the last available data before they made a determination on the grant, which was 2015, the year prior to the pass service. So you can see it, you know, a direct result of decreased service, decreased ridership number on the paratransit that resulted in the lower grant for 2018. So it's about a two-year lag based on just information they had at the available to consider for the band and for WashDOT. Benefits, it's a predictable revenue stream that's independent of sales taxes. Again, if you consider those recession time points, it does not offset the recession. It does not compensate for 25% of sales tax revenue, but it does mitigate some of those losses and impacts. And we could also, you could also argue that there is some small increase that you might see on fares. If you look at 2014 as a, as an example, when the price of gas was at $4 a gallon and the economy wasn't improving as rapidly, we saw ridership across the nation on transit certainly increase. So as a result of that, there's a, you know, increase in fare rate. Again, not to say that that in any way offsets or compensates for the total loss to the sales tax, but again, it independently mitigated the measure. It certainly would give us an equal footing for legislative and grant issues, as we talked about in the front end of the brief, and the potential to start discussions, you know, how we operate differently with some projects in particular for some of our county connectors and how there's different ways to do that. Just because the doors open, you'll see. So as an agency, what we're looking for is to, again, you know, consider the resolution, you know, pass the board direction. Where does the board want the agency to head? Again, the status quo is to remain where we are. I don't think it's a, I don't, I would not recommend, and I don't think it's appropriate for us to make a decision today that we will implement a fare without further considering, you know, public outreach and public impact. There has been discussion in the past about what was on the ballot in 2009, the last time the sales tax measure was passed. The ballot measure itself does not discuss anything about fare free. The ballot measure was an effort to mitigate the impacts of the recession directly. They had already seen the loss of income from the sales tax during the recession and were looking at cutting services in 2010 if they were not able to increase the sales tax revenue. There was a group, a citizens group, that did, that did discuss fare free, but it was not, not an island transit or valid issue. And certainly, you know, not to beat around the bush either, you know, the previous executive director was certainly. So kind of with that in mind, you know, I do think it's fair that if we are going to implement fares before we make a decision doing that, is to hold some further public hearings and comment period with the publics being involved. I would not recommend doing that to your colleagues. I don't think that's appropriate. So, you know, if you're, if you're interested in further outreach for fare policy and making a direction or decision, I would recommend that we do that in January, go into a couple of public meetings, and then a comment period before February when we can make a decision on making fare policies. There's a bumper sticker on the bottom of the slide, as I put there, you know, three to six months for after-board decision. Kind of the point being there is, you know, if we make a decision today that we'll be fair, I can't turn it around. It takes time for us to acquire the fare boxes, certainly install them, train our operators, build those systems in place, and be able to do that. Looking at an aggressive schedule is three months, and, you know, there's a couple of variables I just can't nail down, which is, we don't have a contract for installation. I don't have a delivery date on fare boxes. So once we've agreed to a decision on those, we will be able to know on that time a little closer. The bottom line is if you made a decision in February, the earliest we would be in a fare structure we made, we want to be able to be so far as we're ready.
Comment for you. If the board gave you the direction today not to implement this, but to move forward to get this additional information that we're talking about and have a workshop to kind of fine tune where we think we want to go, what is your comment about that? Could you do that in December?
December's probably a bit aggressive only because we're really only talking, we've got this week, which is Thanksgiving, and you've only got two weeks till next week. I mean, I should certainly do it, you know, January. I'm not confident we'll have a whole lot of new information to give you by December.
Okay. So we don't take action today on a total policy, but we can say, if the word must be, to go forward with gathering this additional information and so we can synthesize our comments here as we share ideas and then take a look at a possible time in January for a workshop. Would the workshop be beneficial? Or are we just doubling up the meeting?
Not necessarily. I think, you know, not the workshop would certainly, there's an advantage to that certainly as you're considering, you know, fare policy is really kind of refining the structure doing that. You know, I would say that in January, you know, if we do public outreaches and public hearings, you know, those are, you lay those at the same time. Do you want any separation? I don't know. I mean, it's, you can do them concurrently, you can do them sequentially, I think that's, you know, that's another.
One last comment from me, yes. I'm more inclined to want to see a schedule about whatever we are going to do or if we're not going to do anything rather than to kind of hang it limbo and wait, wait a month or two before we start taking any action.
I think the only direction I'd look for today's service or December 11th, whichever, would be, do we want to move forward and hold public hearings and do additional public outreaches before we make a decision? You know, then we can lay down those, we can schedule some dates, build that schedule. But then certainly we'll have more information on how long it takes us to do those actions such as installation or what materials are going to be used. We can certainly refine those at the same time.
At this time then, I will undertake some questions here.
Taking on to the chair's question. So I'm just curious that Olympia's given directions to us basically, but it's very low people's lingo, start charging fast. Is there any time in 2018 perhaps that we may be required to do that?
So to directly answer your question Lance, there's nobody that's directly told us we have to implement fare. There have been folks that at both this Washington State Department of Transportation that have attended these meetings in the past, our community liaison, you know, that have recommended that. You know, we have also heard that from some of our legislators as well, our representatives. You know, so that kind of comes into the grant risk piece of it. There's no one that said that there's a requirement that you have to. Obviously, if we don't have a fare, then those folks that advocate or want a fare, you know, that'll be one factor that they'll consider. How much influence do each of those people have on determining outcomes of grants and revenues for our transit? I can't answer.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just, I know it's very important that we don't lose those grant monies. And so I, it's usually contrary to how I feel, like let's not dawdle about it, but in this case, you know, I, I think if we look towards too early in 18 to do it, there could be, you know, a shock value to it. After the holidays, people have spent a lot of money. You know, we don't have huge ridership because of the weather and stuff like that in a lot of cases. But I think if we, as the chair said, have a workshop, discuss this, we'll then perhaps go more towards the spring, hopefully, where you feel comfortable and the agency feels comfortable, then we could then implement it. So I pushed around there. One other question, well, I have two others, but a whole one for the workshop should we decide to have. Are those fare boxes, are these new fare boxes?
Most of them would be. We do have a fair amount, I'm not sure, I think we've got 10, Ken? Yeah, we got 10 boxes that were given to us by Pierce Transit.
Yep.
You know, so there, it wouldn't quite be the number that's up there because we'd be able to offset those. We had a couple previously from Skagit, they've actually asked for them back because they were using them. Interestingly enough, for, just as a reference though, Community Transit, they're newer vehicles. Instead of installing the GFI or larger electronic box in the bus, they are installing the exact same cash fare box up front that we're operating with on the 4K, which is a simple mechanical cash fare box. They also have the Orca pad on it. So what they're finding is that more of their folks are using the Orca pad, you know, they're using that for, you know, for regional connectivity obviously. And what they get out of the $16,000 being invested on the electronic pedestal in the bus just isn't, isn't a good capital investment for them. So they aren't decided where they're going in the future, but they're purchasing new buses and not putting those systems in, it just comes with the simple mechanical system.
Well, I didn't quite get an answer there. I understand the background on some of these fare boxes. I just, having spent 36 years of looking at the progression in fare boxes over the years, that I'm just curious, you know, that if there's warranties with the new ones, they should be, you know. If they're used and old, and I don't know, I haven't seen these, so I can't speak from experience of perhaps problems with jamming and stuff like that, but over the years, it's come a long way, fare boxes. It used to be just prop them up, you know, you look, well, that ain't 30 cents. You know, I had 7 cents, come here. You know, that kind of stuff. So I just.
Most, so I guess a more direct answer to your question is I would sit here and tell you today that if we got 10 of them on hand right now, 50 of the 60 would be.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you Lance. I'm gonna go to the next guy sitting in front of me, which is Rick Handel. Do you hear us okay now, Rick?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Do you have comments to offer?
You know, I think we've pretty much beaten this horse to death, okay, in workshops, the work sessions. We've been, we've been doing it for the last three plus years. So, I mean, I think we need to just either expand it off and take a lot and do public hearings, get public input, and then come back and see how the public feels about it and make a decision to continue to go down this path of talking about it and keep doing work sessions on it because we just keep going around in circles, whether you want to charge fares or not, we need to make that decision that might help on it. So if we want, if, if that's, if we want to do that, then what I think what we need to do is do another round of, you know, the public hearings, let the public know, hey, this is what we're gonna do, and get a good feel for how many people, how many riders we may actually leave, and then also get the opportunity to educate them and let them see there was never the intent that this levy was meant to keep this, this system fare free, and that's a good point. But, you know, it'd be, to continue doing workshops on them, I think it's just personally after what's recent there time, I think we need to just sit back and say, yes, we're gonna do, we're gonna do public hearings, we're gonna get all the public input, and say we're gonna do them. I agree waiting till after the holidays because you're not gonna get anybody to come to your meetings or your hearings before the holidays. This needs to be done at this, at this time of year. We need to, you know, be focused on gearing down for the end of the year, because people are gonna be traveling and whatnot, so I wouldn't do anything major, but after the beginning of the year, set up some public hearings and, and public meetings, and we either are, well, actually, if we're, if we're not going to have a fare policy, there's no sense in doing it in public meetings, I guess would be the best way to put it. Does that make sense?
We hear you.
Well, I would agree. I think we should have some public meetings in January to have a sense of people. I'm not ready to make a decision that that's the way we're gonna go, I don't even know what the public has to say. I don't really feel a need for a workshop over the last year, so we've gotten a lot of information. So I would like to proceed with some public meetings.
I, I agree. I think we've got unanimous support for moving forward with outreach. I think after a 30-year tradition of fare free, trying to have just a series of one-off public meetings around the county is probably not adequate for getting the word out though. I would urge us to do a little more proactive outreach, maybe a presentation at each of the municipality's city council meetings, or if there's invitations at Rotary, or make sure that there's plenty of time for the public to weigh in on this. My ideal would be to put it to an advisory vote on the ballot. That, that has a high cost to it, and I'm not sure we would have the opportunity to educate people about the information. It's important, I think, for folks to understand what it is that they would be buying with this added cost. They're already paying for the service out of sales tax. And if they were asking them to reach in their pockets and pay again, I get it that there's some legislative preference to that, but this is really about local control. And, and if, if there's a way that this actually helps us determine our own destiny, I think that's part of the story for our community to understand. But, and, and so having, adding a leg to our, you know, we have one leg of grants and one leg of sales tax, having one other leg of our, to our financial revenues, I think, is something that's worth discussing. But I want to make sure that our community has plenty of time to chew on this and understand the thought behind it before I, I'm ready to make a decision about it. I agree, I mean, I don't need another workshop to get to that point. I think there's putting together a schedule of outreach that you could present back to us in December about how, what, you know, as a draft that we could then weigh back in on. But I'd like there to be considerable outreach to the community because this is a huge change. We're just celebrating the 30th anniversary, and that's something that I, you know, we should be really proud of what's established here. But this, this transit system works best when, has the public support behind it. And I don't, you know, I think, I'm, I've learned more about the return on investment from your reports than was ever presented in the past, and that's really helpful. But I don't think it's just this board that needs to understand that.
Agreed.
I think our, our citizens need to as well, because they were voter-approved, you know, increases. And we're at the cap of what we can ask for sales tax. But we know that sales tax revenues are not steady things. They go up and down, and boy, we know what the devastating effects are when they forget. So I'm open to moving forward with the outreach, but I would urge us not to think that we're gonna be scheduling a decision in February. I don't know that we can do the outreach that I, I would think maybe in, by the spring. I want people to have a chance to absorb this.
Sure.
And as you say, during the holidays, and it's a big change. And I'm not sure we really know that we need to know about it yet.
And again, my discussion on timeline wasn't to say that, you know, those are what we have to make, those are the earliest points, and I can come up with a reason. So, yeah, I'm not saying that, you know, you're right, you can, you know, when we make a decision, it's completely dependent on when you feel there's enough public outreach and when we're referring folks.
And that might be a time to come back and have, maybe add our, our scheduling of return.
Oh, I was gonna mention one thing, Mike. I know you and I have talked about the, the possibility of being able to bill Medicaid for some transportation, and I know we were both gonna kind of look into that more because we can't do that unless we charge fare, so that could, that's kind of another maybe plus. We don't know, but.
Well, that's one of those pieces. Yeah, if we, if this, if by charging fares, we can expand our paratransit service, or we can add a Sunday service, or, I mean, just helping the community understand what the possibilities are. Building regional partnerships, that is an important thing, I think, but it's kind of an inside baseball thing. That's not gonna be what the general public is gonna think is worth having to pay again or more for a service that they, and, and it's because the details are complicated.
Comment that I'd like to add to this for this member of the board. I'm more interested in a, a big picture solution, a long-term solution for financial sustainability and stability. We could look just a few years back and we find out what the results are, what we don't have, a stable economic structure, financial structure here. I also politically, I think it would be very difficult to sell a system that costs us more than what we receive. And, and I think, Helen, I think you might have been, your suggestion about looking at the apps, going to a more technologically advanced system, I think that was your idea. And if it was, it was a good idea, because I think it makes a big difference on the bottom line, that how can we tell the public that we're going to add, for example, if we add a Saturday service, that we're going to turn down the opportunity of collecting $200,000 or $300,000 in form of fares. And when we look back at, I think, Resolution 1788, it's one of the previous ones, where we are looking at reviewing our service, enhancing the service, one of the comments, if you look in, in that report, and I did look that up, there seemed to be support, I think this is exactly what it says, there seems to be support for pay for fare if we have Saturday service. And, and I have randomly stopped at bus stops, come out on the jog or whatever I'm doing, and talked to people about that very thing, and consistently it came up. When the fare issue came up was, well, we pretty much like to have Saturday service too. And it is possible to throw the program, but it can only do that if it's financially stable. And, and that's in good times and bad, and we all have experienced this at our age. We've seen economic bubbles, and we are at probably the peak of the current bubble. And I like to do financial planning when things are really going good and not have to rely on double it back, but I think you're going sideways sometimes, it's too late at that time. So any other comments? Come, Lance?
Okay. You know, to get this out to the public, we need to look at every possible way to do that. And one of the biggest ways is everybody reads a paper in the morning, or sometime during the day. And we need to get that scheduled so we can bring that information to the public, as well as other ways of having information on the coaches that people can take and read also. I don't care whether we call it a workshop or just, we need to, we need, if we're gonna decide to have this, I think if the board decides to bring forth to the public the why's and wherefore's of implementing a fare policy, the first question will be, who's gonna pay and what are, what are we gonna charge? So we need to decide that, if we decide we're gonna bring this to the public. Do you not agree? Okay, so that's it. I, I don't want to overtalk.
And I like the model that was presented because I believe that's consistent with our neighboring transit district. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was gonna throw the same question that Lance, just that philosophical raise. I think if you're gonna go out to the public for hearings, I think you'd have to have some set of refinement and potential fare policy as opposed to philosophically fares, yes or no. I think this, you're exactly right. I think they're gonna wanna know, is it a buck, is it a buck 50? Because that's where you're gonna get the real feedback, is there.
And would we ask the presentation going to the public to be very similar to the presentation we just had, which I personally felt was pretty comprehensive? Yeah, I think there's some refinements we can make out of certainly to, you know, I think spell some things out more clearly for folks that don't speak transit. You know, we tend to take for granted some of the things that we speak in transit, so there might be some further explanations.
Yeah, well, that's, if we could take December and January to, as a board to get that part, what is it we do want to take to the public and then be ready to go out to the public and be deliberate about it in that way? I just, I, I know there was some urgency about moving forward. I think we have, what I'm hearing is consensus about moving forward, but we want to do it deliberately and thoughtfully and make sure that we've considered those questions that are gonna come up. And certainly the paratransit issue is one that I know I would just to have an answer to before we go off.
Yeah, we could certainly, you know, there's a couple of things that would be relatively easy to answer by December 11th, you know. The Medicaid problems weren't, it's probably easiest to, you know, and maybe worth on December 11th, kind of looking at just the fare policy in more detail and looking at where, if we want to, you know, not to say we will, but if we were looking at fare policy, what would that fare policy look like as a board? What are our neighbors having in? And that would, you know, help shape those public outreaches.
Well, I, because I think it would be helpful for our public to see what, how it is delivered in other service out those are systems. And Clallum and Gray's Harbor would be good examples to look at as well, at smaller.
Sure.
What comments, Skagit are certainly our regional partners, but they're so much bigger than we are.
Right. Well, Jefferson's a little bit across the line.
Yeah, yeah, Jefferson, because they have more, have more role in.
Rick, do you have any further comments to add to this conversation?
Not really.
Okay. What would the board like to do?
Well, I think we agreed to, Mike, continue working on it, and we have a further discussion in December with some more specifics about what, what we might take to the public.
So we don't need to have a motion and an action on that. Okay. All right. So, Mike, you have a verbal direction from the, from the board to proceed. All right. Getting back on track. Rick, are you gonna stay for the rest of this? The next item up would be discussion, let's see, I got the order here messed up again.
The budget is what we have.
The budget. Item number two is discussion with possible action on Resolution 1317 regarding the 2018 annual budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion. I would be ready to adopt it if other members don't have burning questions.
Say that again.
I'd be willing to make a motion to adopt it if we're ready to move forward. I just want to kind of take a temperature of the record.
I don't know where the uptake that, that Mike, or, excuse me, I'm like, the all that's out, and it was all just basically, you know, who might I, but, yeah, I thought we were ready to adopt today, despite the standing.
All right. Sounds like we have somebody who wants to make a motion.
Well, just to check with Paul, I mean, the, this, Resolution 1317 incorporates those changes that you talked about.
It incorporates all changes.
It, it, the, 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 it's, 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 it's all that, everything.
In terms of the budget, correct? The assumptions for the Saturday services included in the budget.
Right.
All right, well, then I move approval of Resolution number 13-17 for the 2018 annual budget as presented.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the 2018 annual budget. Any further discussion?
Great job following Mike on that.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? It's unanimous, thank you. So we're gonna go now on to the discussion with possible action regarding service expansion.
So, so we put this in there as, for the board and for the public. We've been talking about, we have hired operators, we're beginning to hire the rest of support staff for Saturday service. We remain on track at the moment. We are still, we're not far along yet in the, in the date, but we put this as a, as a disclaimer out there, just to kind of give you and the public kind of notes that, you know, this is our direction, we want to expand Saturday service. If it doesn't define a date, we'll define that as we get a little further along in the training track and be able to go back down. Our initial planning date would be in the January. We think we will do that the last Saturday in January. But that should be a two-year.
Have you built off the position yet, Mike?
For the operators, yes. We are out to hire on facilities and maintenance now.
Okay, good, okay.
Well, no, I was gonna, I was bringing the motion.
Well, it's had for the discussion.
So I was curious, would we need a motion today for that working date to be possible? If it were delayed a month, it would probably.
We wrote this so that we didn't put a time in it.
As long as they get enough money to pay for it, just to qualify it.
Lance, do you have any comments? Rick?
I'm ready to move.
Well, one of the comments that I- Well, one of the comments that I have is recognize that we postponed the decision on going to the public with fares, right? And also, even though we put a placeholder in the budget for Saturday service, I think that not having a date, and it's possible that it might be better to tie the Saturday fare with our decision on the fares, Saturday service fares, it looks a little awkward, at least to me, that we're enhancing or expanding the service incurring additional obligations without recognizing that we haven't seriously adopted or have formally adopted an additional revenue stream to help that for expansion.
I would say, Rick, I would argue that we were not adding additional service, we're just reinstating past service, bringing us, bringing us back up to what we had prior to financial crisis. I would, I would say that if we got to a point where we were adding more additional routes, as a matter of fact, this is, I think, scaled downward to what we used to have on Saturday. However, is reinitiating a service that we had before, or not reinitiating a service.
Okay.
And we have money in the budget to cover it.
That's, we have money in the budget today to cover it in this economy. What about in a downturn economy? You're going to pull Saturday service offline again if that's the case?
Well, with a 25% reduction in revenue, we would certainly have to look at.
I, I think, I actually think that's one of the, the pieces of information that I think is most helpful for the community as we go out, is that we really are balanced on two legs of a stool without another revenue source somewhere to stabilize us should the economy go down. We are vulnerable. And so, I mean, knowing that we're vulnerable, that, and that's the risk that was, that's the calculation that was taken in the past, and, and we're, I mean, I think part of the outreach is saying, do you want us to be vulnerable to that even in the future? Or do we, or should we go forward with fares? And I, you know, I just think that's the community discussion. We have, sales tax revenues are back up to, to the more historic levels, and so most of our agencies have hired back to where we were in 2010. Similarly, Island Transit has been able to now position itself to restore service to where it was prior to the recession. That's what I see as Saturday service. Commissioner Handel on that, I don't see it as an add-on, it's a restoration, but it's without some other conversation, we will continue to be vulnerable to the downturns in the economy unless we have a different strategy. And that, you know, that's, that's a community conversation to be had, but I don't want to tie, I really, I really would not want, and we have capacity now, we're collecting the sales tax, I think delivering the service is the right thing to do for the community. Are you agree?
Well, in that case, if there's no further comment, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to follow a recommendation of the Executive Director and authorize increased service, including implementation of Saturday service within the approved budget parameters.
And we had a second from Mr. Handel, a motion from Ms. Henderson to move forward to follow the recommendation of the Executive Director and authorize increased service, including implementation of Saturday service within the approved budget parameters. Any further discussion? Lance?
I just wanted to clarify what Rick said. I think it's a really good point. It's actually reinstating service, right? I mean, is it not a form, like, we did, we-
We had Saturday service in 2014.
Okay. I, I think it's how we bring that forward. I mean, it's critically important here so that we get over analyzed and everything we say. Pardon me, I think you're spreading it, Rick. I think the call, I heard you coughing on the phone, and now it's gone over my way. But seriously, I, I think reinstating is a portion of the service that we have to curtail.
Yeah, the wording expansion, I think is what we're all reacting to.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we had discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, so we are going to move on to Saturday service, and I'm trusting that it's sustainable, that we don't have to drop back on funding. And Helen, I think your comments were very worthwhile about the presentation to the public. And the, that's the good part about being on the board, you know, you can collectively get different points of view. And there is a solution out there, and, and did over the last three, four years, or something like that, I've been on this board, I've really appreciated being on this board and working with this group and our past groups because we had different ideas, different approaches, and we're still making progress, and moving along for the benefit of transit. Next item. You staying with us, Rick?
You may, or?
It's totally up to you. We're on, item number four, discussion with possible action, Resolution 1417 regarding adoption of weapons and island transit property policy. That's weapons on island transit property policy.
I'm going to move out here, and I think that, I think there are three items that we just-
All right. Thank you, thanks for joining us, and good luck too, Rick.
Thank you for making the conversation.
Great meeting you. I have to tell you that I, I have to leave about 11:15 because I have a conference.
We're going to, we're going to move this.
So we have to hold on to anything. This is the last thing we're going to-
And this is really quick. I mean, so, so there's nothing other than the policy that's included in the package, it is not changing policy. What it is, it's consolidation of policy. We have, in our employee handbook, we have policy for operators and employees, and we have a policy, but we don't have anyone placed where the law is in the handbook, which is what this covers for, you know, we've set policy for vendors and employees on the property and use of our training facilities. And in accordance with the law, our riders are allowed to carry within the framework of the law. So that's all this does. It captures what current law is and what our current policy is, puts it in one place so it's a weapon policy. If, coordinated with the union above, this is a mirror of community transit policy, so it's not new policy, again, it's just a, really just a clarification, consolidation in one place, and there's something for both the public and our employees, they can look at and understand what the rules are.
Any questions or comments?
Move approval of Resolution number 14-17 regarding adoption of a weapons and island transit property policy. Second?
We have a motion and a second to move and adopt the new weapons and island, on island transit property policy. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very unanimously. It's adopted. Check you were moved out.
My, okay, I just want to make sure we had to vote on something I was here.
Is it all right if I provide the things that I can check and sign?
I still have, I have a minute. Maybe you can sign slowly.
All right, you're ready, I'll run through my report quickly. Just for employee recognition, a couple of things this month, we are just out to vote for employee that has for week down, the employee here for commando. So we'll wrap up on the 29th of this month, and we'll announce the, those selected employees of the year, employee to half-fifty, island transit policy party in December. We're also kind of celebrating, you know, Bitters Week this month. Chris Lamstrom, one of our commando operators, he's been with us for 12 years, he's retired and leaving this month. Our accounting clerk was vacated at the end of October, we have just hired a new person, they will start December 4th, so we'll fill that vacancy. The replacement for Chris Lamstrom, our operator, is currently in training as well, so he was, he was kind enough to let us know in advance his retirement, so we're able to pre-plan for, and incorporate his replacement in as the, two hires to us. Just a quick update on the farmhouse game, we have a meeting, there's a legislative forum that's scheduled for December 15th. That'll be an opportunity for the farmhouse game to present some of the outcomes of the September health and transportation report, you know, to our legislative partners. We expect it to be well attended right now, I think they've got, let me see, Senator Hogs has, has agreed to attend. He is likely the next chairman of the Senate Transportation Committee. I don't know if that's officially been named yet, but I think that's the likely chairman. We'll also have Representative Jim Robinson from District 38, Senator Bailey from our own District 10, and they're looking for a new vice service for Los Angeles. You have seen the invitations that have sent out for the upcoming celebration on our 30 years of service. The event will start at 10:00 AM on December 1st, Friday at Harbor Station. It will continue through the day. I'm going to give Mary Beth Crandall, our new mobility specialist, some kudos here. She's worked with a great number of businesses and groups in the community to arrange a really kind of a festive event for the first, so we're going to have on-bus entertainment. This is all provided. We are not paying for any of these services, these are all folks that have donated their time and talent, you know, to kind of celebrate the 30 years of service. And now, a number of buses up and down the island, starting from 2:00 to 6:00 PM on Friday, everything from a variety of musicians, comedians, and clown. We will advertise for those that are afraid of clowns, so they know which bus the clown is on.
Is it Dino?
Behind the wheels.
Dino's not very exciting.
I don't think, I don't, I don't remember the-
It would be like in the Donatus times.
So that's great, you know, we've got a, a number of other things that, that businesses up and down the island have donated to give as gifts to folks on the, on the riders on transit also.
That's really cool.
Regional course, we meet with coordination, we're going to meet with Kidset Transit next week to discuss a couple of pilot projects they've got, to support the rural community Kidset. One of those is a, what they call Tap Ride, it's, I mentioned in the past a little bit, it's called Uber Bus. You know, they've identified some areas that just don't have enough ridership to establish a fixed route, so they've, they've implemented this Tap Ride system. So we're going to go over and see how that works and see if that's something that we need to, what we need to roll here as well. They also have a, a social services van pool program, so we're interested in that as well, if you look at those two programs. RFP for our information systems, you know, that was in the budget for 2017. We've got a great response, we have 14 responses to our RFP. We have tentatively selected a finalist, we have one final kind of interview or discussion with them, and we'll, we'll negotiate and award that contract. That'll help us with our assessment for strategic planning for information systems in the future. The Vanpool VIP Grant, you know, I think we've mentioned this a couple of times, we purchased 12 vans in May of 2016. They were purchased with a grant from Washington State Department of Transportation that provided 95% of the funding. That was an expansion effort, in other words, to expand our van pools. You know, we've tried in, actually with Nichols Brothers, we did expand for a little while, but we've been able to sustain that. So the result is, these will now become replacement vehicles for the purposes of a grant, and that means that the match is now 35% for us instead of 5%. So that was in the 2017 budget. We anticipated that it might not prove this, it's about a $90,000 bill, it's due to Washington State Department of Transportation, we haven't been able to sustain growth in our van pools, so that's an obligation that we'll complete this month. Other grant-related projects, we have Harbor Station LED improvement, which was funded through, through the RTPO process, that's been contracted, and we expect that to hopefully just happen in the near. We also have bike lockers on order, so we'll move forward those, we'll expect to receive those kind of in the near future, and then we'll come back to you with where those locations will be and what our plan is for use of those, and kind of how the policy and how we use them, so you'll see that here later in the session. We have been contacted by Pastor Lindis from the Freeland Park and Rise and Trinity Lutheran Church, so he's given us kind of a, a very, very rough estimate of what is working at for, for the paving, their parking lot next year, so we'll start to work with them on reviewing our agreement and what's appropriate for island transit. That's not in the budget for next year, so that would be something that once we reach a agreement, we'll come back to you and we'll approve on this. I talked about a board retreat, I'd like to propose a one-day off-site to, to have a retreat that will be held in 2018, and to give the staff and really the board the opportunity to review both our priorities today and develop guidance and priority for island transit movement board. We've looked at several locations here in Woodgown that would be able to host a retreat, and we'll probably look to recommend that, it would be in February, in March, coincide with kind of our monthly board meeting. We kicked it out with the board meeting, and then kind of we'll, kind of open up some broader strategic topics and wrap the day up. It will fit well into our planning cycle in that in June, we typically, or we will do a staff offsite, how to line up priorities for the transit development plan. It kicks off in June, then the budgetary process in the fall, and also this year is a, is a grant cycle for the next five years of 2018. So all of those things will kind of line up well, and I think I'd like to recommend unless there's any reason that the board would not like for the retreat, that we'll try and schedule with your staff and look at the vision as we're in motion.
You'll find a date.
Good for you. Over the last month, we had three minor accidents, two of them were results of other vehicles vacuuming the stationary buses. There's not much I can do for that of those. All of them have been very minor, all the vehicles were, either didn't require repair or repaired and go back into service. No injuries taken in those. Medium-duty buses, you know, our nine buses that we're still waiting on, we've been working with the dealership manufacturer to determine the source of the higher-than-expected interior noise. Necessary alternative, but they've delivered vehicles as well as the nine that were shown in production. They've looked at alternatives, we had a phone conference from the last week, we've looked at alternatives for a different differential in rear end that may reduce the noise, but we're still waiting on some kind of approach for that. Light-duty bus acquisitions, I think all, either all but one, or all of vehicles are now in market T.O., that's five vehicles that are replacement paratransit vehicles. They're finishing out their dealership fitting down there, and I think we're still looking at the end of this month for the later year of island transit.
Do they do the decents and graphics on the boat too?
No, I'm looking at you.
We're getting a boat business.
No, we won't. No other updates on any of Woodgown, I think we have a good meeting, we're waiting to take something over the next week or so, we'll look at that. Only other updates I have for you is kind of some notes again, I'll holler in December 1st, and also December 9th, we have our, certainly our, final transit holiday party, that will certainly extend to the future, all of you as board members, it will be in our community.
That was very fun last year. I encourage other board members to attend. And I was going to ask you about the Port of South Wippi meeting, have they asked for a presentation?
We had, actually, we had asked to present or get with them. I have reached out to most of the municipalities between September, because I want to get some feedback, and maybe we just kind of implement some changes in July, you know, give some feedback, how's that working? They had delayed until September, I think they were looking at how, there were some discussions in parking in market T.O., so that's, that's the first. Any questions?
Sorry, Paul, I'm going to miss you.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought you gave me the cue.
I turned it off. Sorry.
I'm just going to start. This is financial report for October 2017. So our cash sources are, by and large, very typical for the month, we have miscellaneous revenue of $42,000, which includes some fuel reimbursements, fuel tax reimbursements, otherwise pretty typical investment interest. We saw about eight, I think it was $8,700 investment revenue from a bond that we invested in, otherwise, like I said, pretty typical. Our total sales tax exceeded our amended budget by $75,000, or 8.77%, or about $387,000 or 4% ahead of our amended budget. from the bond that we invested in, otherwise, like I said, pretty typical. October sales tax, it exceeded our amended budget by $75,000, or 8.77%, for about $387,000 or 4% ahead of our amended budget for the year, and remaining months are the same as the budget, 88% approximately of 2017 amended budget is fulfilled, and our target is 83%. As I was saying, miscellaneous revenue, $38,000, almost $39,000 was fuel tax refund. Other than that, capital grants and operating grant revenues, we didn't see anything this Typical payroll expenses, some capital purchases, we had some capital grant purchases of approximately $49,000, otherwise mostly just payroll and regular operating expenses. Capital grant payments were, for shelters, about $3,500, and for peers, about $46,000. Our cash reserves, you can see the impact of that under capital for the capital expenditures, otherwise just normal allocations to our reserve, assigned reserves. And if we're just looking at our cash reserves, we have a total cash of $8.5 million, about $200,000 increase throughout September. Budget actual information, once again, we're far behind on the capital grants in terms of revenue, but otherwise, pretty much on target with where we are in the year. Our state operating grants is well below that, and the reason why is the state has not reversed since the beginning of the biennium through October 31st. But, you know, like I say, we've already received that, those revenues, first of November, so we'll see that next month. When we're looking at expenses, again, pretty much on target, if we don't talk about capital, as we're still waiting to receive the buses, the buses, a little higher on wages and salaries, but as people take vacations here at the end of the year, I think that's going to balance out with the taxes and benefits. And you can see, we're well below our target for the category of tools, parts, supplies, and fuel, primarily because of fuel expenses, so below what we projected. If you look at some other data, fixed period ridership, our total monthly ridership was about $69,000, and we're up 2.1% from last year with an additional day in this month, and we're up almost 7% from a month ago with two more days in the current month. And this chart just kind of shows where the average daily ridership is by route, so you can see, there's some fluctuations, but it's been pretty consistent, though. The rapid one, you can see just how much ridership we have there. Total fuel costs, almost $55,000, up 3% approximately from last month, and up about 15% from a year ago. Our fuel costs are rising, compared to last year.
That's one of my concerns, make a comment on this, I'm reading a report regarding future on fuel, and the trend is upward, and that's an item that will impact us, obviously. It's going to be interesting to see how high that goes.
Bus per gallon, diesel is up 7 cents a gallon, or about almost 4% from last month unleaded, down 9 cents a gallon, or about 3 and 1/2 percent from last month. It's kind of interesting converging a little bit, one going up and one going down. And that's all I have.
So I have a question, with the route changes in July, are miles less or more than they were?
A little more.
So that's part of the fuel cost, boy, that is, a little bit more mileage as well as the cost, exactly. I was thinking it was probably a combination.
It's also hard to, when you look at month-to-month fuel expenditures, they don't line up with days of service, so some of those months, you get the fuel bills that come in first of the month, then later, you saw.
And then I also want, as a member of the finance committee, to see, that $17,000, I think Paul mentioned, that that was interest from the bond that we made an investment in as a board, so that's revenue that we wouldn't have had, additional revenue, this organization wouldn't have had if we had implemented that financial tool as, as an investment, and it's great to be in a place where we can be earning interest again, you know, so all of the reserves were, in 2013, were put towards this building, and so now, as the reserves come back, there's an opportunity to reinvest in the marketplace and get some dividends from that. And that's, another piece of that fiscal sustainability is trying to diversify your revenue sources, just having a healthy balance in the bank, so if you can do that, is one of those pieces.
Any other business? I think that just about concludes that. Our next meeting is December 11th. We need a, we don't need a motion to adjourn.
By acclamation, you can adjourn. We can acclaim to be adjourned.
Well, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
You, too. You, too. Thank you.
And...
Helly, did you sign the voucher?
Yeah, everybody...
I think I did. I need to look at it.
Both times. Really? Everybody, please, can I get it?
Yes.
It's not a lot. So we actually got a man for...
We're a split house here. So, my son-in-law, my son-in-law, but I, my brother...
Oh, you got in there too early.
At home till like 9:30.
Those were we're looking at. I love my... Cool little cell. Yeah. Love me, you're a great thrower, we're scoring real soon. We have four kids. We have some children, five wives, all of our work, we have to make a big amount out of them. Some of them, some of them, we can't, you kids, pretty young, little lard.